Please be seated, please. Please sit down. Have a look at the official camera and squat down. On your left. Squat down on your left. Leave your cameras and have your cameras leave them and leave this. The people who speak in the distance to see him and kill him. The people want to see you. Back to the wall.
Please, just for a minute, guys, if you have a spare camera, leave it. Make sure you are talking about it in English, because that's what I expect. Please. Please, you have a very good voice. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Those special members of the choir, those who come with... Let me come, please. Let me come.
Thank you, squad, three, no block of us.
Thank you, there, you can't hear me. Thank you, guys. Before any form of revision...
Squat down, squat down.
Of any statement... Before any form of revision, any statement... Let me pray, you have something asked, that will please all fans of... And observe the one we need standing. For the days of our own dear brother. We give it to the candidate, and I say... And the souls of Professor Ikone and all the first thirty thousand to the victory of God and the rest of the people. The presence of the Lord. The presence of the Lord. And fifteen, my brothers and my children. And all the candidates, and the apostles, and the apostles, and the apostles. The head of the Lord. The high present. The chairman of our, of our Chamber of Commerce. My brother, the president of Nassimah, comes down. Let me stand alone, look at the face of the Lord. About when? For all of your papers, I will speak to them. I will not take your diamonds. I gave your power, today is not to campaign. Many of us are paying. But I gave to our people to show the people of our land. That this journey of the night. Will bring back the testity of our heart. About today is a ghost of what our life is supposed to be. About today is a ghost of what our life is supposed to be. Because it's a myth around Nigeria. What Nigeria has produced in the past twenty years. Is this security? Poverty? Suffering? And all sorts of problems, which I do want you to tell me. Today, no Nigerian is secure. The woman who has in video. Or this country, God, okay? If you ask somebody, I need today to go to your village for weekend, it is impossible. No, who you have got, have the photos. Several, I'm little. Everywhere Nigeria today is insecure. Nigeria have been there, and produce more poor people living in poverty. And any sovereign be anywhere in the surface of the earth. And the journey plan to progress, by all record, were one hundred and three million people living in poverty. Higher than India, higher than China. These two countries each have a population of over one point four million. If I have four poor people, and both of them combined. From the highest of two children, then this is endless. That is why... That is why some of us decided to get involved. To solve this problem, if I look, it will be very difficult. Everywhere I've been, I was in South Africa yesterday, I was in Kenya, everywhere I've been. All Nigeria has asked, I was in Boronu, North, from this out, how are you going to solve this security problem? My answer is that, the criminals are not more familiar. It's lack of leadership. We have a country, and we have to defend it, and it wants to secure. That is the foundation of people's growth. The criminal to the east is not more familiar than governments. Rather, the criminal to the west or north, more familiar than governments. With a clear leadership, what does it will in charge? And I have saw people that... We will be charged. And that's the way to deal with it. To restore our security architecture. The edges. Do the right thing, so the country will recover. Who will unite Nigeria? Nigeria today is no longer what it used to be. Private issues, with all their deep roots. Today, the only one who do politics is by the way ourselves. The only one who do politics is by the way ourselves. No, there are few people confessing to the president of Nigeria. And now the same thing. All we need to do is to listen to them. And last, I ask ourselves, who are wrong, then we will trust what? We want every Nigerian to be proud of being Nigerian. Other war, so can fight the security, without Nigeria being productive. That is all, and that must is that, we want the group Nigeria from consumption to... Your bounty is not for this thing. That is why I have been running all over the place. And there's no place to can testify or be able to verify that or other. This used to be a time of reference. Today, it's opposite of that. It has not, it has not been sold or produced in that way. It's not happening today. And I was number, we are going to have a Nigeria. Today, everybody in business complaining about rate of exchange, complaining about this. The rate of exchange of your currency cannot get better, because it is a portion of your result. And your result is a portion of your export. If you're not exporting anything, you can't have money. You can't hook up to guns to cash money, you didn't pay anything. You have to pay something before you can cash anything. Your country is not exporting anything. And that is how I said, that foundation can... Our country is a country of two hundred and fifty million people. Of calling their mother. We live on high one, over thirty-six thousand, thousand, three thousand square kilometers of land. Our natural system. For our export, last year is eighteen point nine trillion naira. If you divide it by six hundred and fifty, it will give you less than thirty billion dollars. That is not acceptable, in every part of the world, for a country of this size. It is not acceptable. Smaller countries are exporting more than this. There's one country, the most country I've ever seen, more country. And I also give it size, like I don't elect, or this one, I don't elect. I may alone can produce more and more Nigeria exports in a year. Vietnam, Vietnam is one hundred million people. Living on three hundred and one thousand square kilometers of land. So they have one third of our land, and half of our population. And their exports in two thousand and twenty-one is about five billion dollars. We produce to ten percent. And one people who live on one third of our land, and half our population, and one of these areas export. They need to export oil, which we export. They need to export natural things, they associate to manufactured goods. Vietnam exported footwear, nearly eighteen billion. They have sixty thousand shoes and factories in the market. That's a lot of money. Vietnam exported clothing, that's two billion dollar. So they need more clothing than we export, entire export, including iron. And we have all this stuff on the market. And our mother, Chinese, has, no other of such countries have. Our route to the sea is there a hundred kilometers. So why is that not happening? Because our country is not working. That's how I said, in two years of being in office, our power will not go to the one side. The market, the market, that will be seen, so they can export the goods. Because of cheap, we waste our time, it cannot continue. We are not in, we are not in politics for everything other than the most Chinese country. I will, I need to hear, to make it work. Our life become a shadow of what you want to do. So I want to look at one day that live. I want to the streets, I want to, I spent one week in Bangladesh. Watching women, so close, and everything for export. Bangladesh in two thousand and twenty-one exported that six billion dollars worth of clothing, I connect. And our life is... That is why I said, it is not a complete promise, will bring whatever it takes. Today, our country is busy doing all those support for SMEs, near TV. They are busy, do not stop support by for industry, even though this one is free, how many people in our market? That is the problem. Those who are doing something, are not getting anything. This announcement will stop in TV, because we come to our... You know what I mean, TV? Everybody in Nigeria has a factory in government, I have gone to the law, and I don't know. The poorest people today in Nigeria, not enough. And I said, give me a chance, I'll pull your people out of poverty, because what you have, what it not have. The north alone can create and give Nigeria ten times what they have from wine. But because of the last country where people are sharing, are not producing anything. The north have vast opportunity, they have... Our two biggest states in this country, in terms of size, Nigeria, Boronu, and Darab. Today, those three states are one of the poorest states in Nigeria. If you go to Nigeria state, several local governments is under the control of violence, are not doing anything. They are waiting to receive from fatihri allocation, which is the most they can get in a year, after reducing their debt. It's about fifty billion naira, that is the highest they can get, a one year. Nigeria state is on seventy-six point three thousand square kilometers of land, farther land, which you can cultivate. Nigeria state is two and a half times the size of Netherlands. Netherlands is weak, dark, and difficult, with all the bad weather. Total export of Netherlands, of our total export of Netherlands in two thousand and twenty-one is one hundred and twenty billion dollars. Nigeria state is not exporting anything. Nigeria state can see itself, the youth, they don't have a job, that's why they are forced to violence. If Nigeria state was able to do five percent, not ten percent, five percent of the work Netherlands did. In that quarter, by two, two and a half times Jalan, they will earn sixty billion dollars. And since one hundred and fifty is three point eight trillion, about four trillion, that is eighty times what they get from fatihri allocation in one year. And that seriously, the country cannot continue their work. And I have a point. The national district of Afghanistan, where we have more, and have all sorts of things, I don't show up, Boronu. You live on seventy point nine thousand square kilometers of land. Bolus state, you hold on three times the size of Israel. Israel is twenty-two point one, times three, sixty-six, Bolus state is seventy point nine. And you can't see yourself, and you have some Israel forest, which is about three times the size of Israel, is far land. It cannot yet threaten to watch, because we cultivate something there, there must be something there, that we can cultivate, that will help us finish. But there is some threat to watch. And I will tell you many, a legendary triangle, we have flown, that we're sitting here, why can't we direct them, or want them to go where we need it? What about country is this? I would say, no, Bolus state can produce and feed the size, it is a separate thing. And so is so many other states in the north, but as I said, it is three, Darab, I was there, met with the government, met with the leaders of there. I said to them, look at the half of your state is. They live on the plains of Manbilla, where you can cultivate flower, tea, coffee, bit of tourism. Taraba state is fifty-four, with four counties, square kilometers of land. Taraba state is bigger than Belgium and Israel combined. And you're not doing anything. I said, we have a country. Kenya, in twenty twenty-one, exported flour. Flour, over half a billion dollars, they're not in a cultivating flower. And when they are so young boys and girls picking flour, they didn't pay on red dollars. And they have less than ten percent of employment, and about thirty-five percent unemployment, people are just cultivating flower, it's not a good size, isn't it? Ethiopia, exported any coffee, one point one billion dollars in twenty twenty-one. They're not in a cultivating coffee. Everybody who are selling, they can drink about one point five billion bottles of tea, they're not in cultivating tea. These are things, but let's not want, where it can be done for the tourism, that it can be done in Taraba, but not in Sarab, in Sarab. They are waiting to share. It cannot happen, it cannot continue. All we do here is share, all we do here is stealing. People are stealing public money, that's all we do. Our students were home for eight years, not going to school. In a country where the, the global intake of higher education is that eight percent, we are nine percent. So we are not people in school, yet we are close for eight years, and the reason why we are close eight years is because, everyone's... Everyone's, is because... As soon as we took an agreement, in two thousand and nine, with further comment of Nigeria, to pay them just one point eighty million. And we paid them two hundred for nineteen, two thousand and nine. So today, we have happened, how many years? That is what we did, and our discussion grew. Yes, that's how the money of foreigners change, we just need it every dollar. We just need every money to meet up our obligation. Because of stealing, where the only our bad country, without Sasha, we've been there, and not producing his quota. Where the only our bad country, and not producing his quota. Then we meet every dollar, what we lose in a month, yes, and one that will be shared by everybody, including this and that. For what we lose in a month, to solve the problem of university. The money we are earning there was one point one trillion. So completely spread through, last time I knew, was about three hundred people. In the month of July, two thousand and twenty-two, our bad production for one month was one million eighty-three thousand. I thought I was one point eight, but about two, one point eight of two. So every day from our official rate, we are losing in the month of July, because in the month we have the highest price of oil in last year. We are losing, every day seventeen, seven hundred and seventeen thousand barrels a day. Which at that one day, was twenty-two million, two hundred and seventy-seven pounds. At hundred and ten dollars, is two billion, four hundred and forty-five billion dollars. If you were to write by six fifty, it will give you one point four billion something, which is a very small, very small amount. One month, one month, come one month. That will have solved, they need for one point one billion, I cannot want to compute this waste road. But nobody said anything, because those who are stealing the money are people in poverty. Nobody here can steal oil, oil is being stolen by people, eh? We have some city, which is organized tribe. We are one hundred, we are two hundred and sixteen million people. Pakistan is two hundred and fifty million people. They are poorer than Nigeria, for they consume less than fifty percent of our daily consumption of oil. They are poorer, which means they have more cash. Nigeria people, all again, they are to tell you to do, that this year's election, I know looking from the different parties, different associations, have different sympathies. But let me assure you, this year's election is an existential election for Nigeria. The election, I will show what I will go for, what I will finish. They are mad, it is all going to be a big drive. Let nobody tell you about an election from here. No. No tribe buys very cheaper. Every tribe in Nigeria is hungry, every tribe is searching for security, every tribe is searching for... Let nobody take it to vote for him for his religion, no religion buys very cheaper. If you know a church where they sell things cheaper, food cheaper, shk, let me go there and buy, and continue my own church. Everybody is suffering, I tell the people in the north. After sixty-two years of Nigeria, you really just over two years, for the poorest states are there. So it has nothing to do with tribe, has nothing to do with religion, these are all politicians. These are all politicians used to hide their incompetence. And when they get there, those who believe in what they say, they can't affect anything. It is nobody's fault. It is some of Nigeria to take back our country. The only one, the only one who to talk about is Trump. I am the most qualified to talk about Trump. Because, because my people for fifteen years, after they told us no victory, no victory, have been treated unjustly. But I'm not talking about Trump. I'm contesting this election as a Nigerian, who is the most qualified speaker. I love asking for my throne. I want to give you a project to do around Nigeria. For many people, everybody. I love on the behalf of modern history and create a formidable nation. Make every Nigerian would happy to say, I'm a Nigerian. Not as an east or west. I don't see that with their culture. Have fought insecurity. Have fought a American revolution that went into the revolution. What I said to them after today, they will still have. If the election remains of characteristic and tough, it remains of competitiveness. It is not meant to be a sentiment. We want to trust the person who are asking to do this country. And I'm asking you to trust me. It remains of someone who are committed, compassionate. I want to be a mentor and assist you to do the job. Listen to the God, Nigeria, let me see. I see, we need people who are capable. Those are the leaderships. That is what I'm asking you. So I can't do a bar, so thank you for the support. Thank you that Abba will be great in it. Abba the Indian person, the Indian person. And you will see, because they are complicated to me. And he has an answer that is peculiar. Indian person, the only things you can do is you see come alive. That's all we want to do. So when he have given material, to go out and that with the market is Nigeria. But I have opportunity, I want to do. Anything you can do to solve, support one more. He really appreciate it. You have focus. You have friends in the north, friends in the west, friends in the east. Let them know that we are ready for this job. Today, the four main, calling four main content. I don't want to say, we are not, we are three or four. You can try and check our record. If anybody said he does the right corruption, let's go where to where he passed. I don't want to stand. So don't say what to do. I was the one of one of our states for eight years. In eight years, I did not appoint anybody to me to any post. And I don't want to mention to what I say. Because the bodies in the region for corruption. And go and check whatever anybody wants to turn to data, who is anything. The same thing. For eight years, not on that of level three, I sat down with him. And says, act it for me. For eight years, I did not owe pension and gratuity for one day. For eight years, I never won a star. For eight years, I never won a trophy. When I clearly have suddenly pensioned, that was used to run our past days when I was living. That is fine, that's three billion dollars. What I lost was oil when I came to Pierre. And it is a record that will not tell anyone. For eight years, not one piece of money. When anybody said it was our greatest achievement, I remember that. Did you have office on the front of the map? I started to this all. And I had the election in here. He was there for a little while, then I went back. Did you have office? I imagine for a month that you have heard how the company did that in my state. And all the leaders, I tell you something, I have the files, which contain that I have in a sense, fifty million dollars, over ten billion, that for the state. I remember one, you wrote a file that such a, fifty million dollars, over ten billion dollars. And for that, fifty million dollars, over ten billion dollars. And today, I have seen the sign. Once I told you sign when you are leaving office, to sign for my own gratuity or pension or anything. Since I left the land state, I don't have a gun and I'm not passing a button of money. It is the next year. And I can't do asking people. Please, Nigeria is going through an existential period. Go out and vote for Labour Party. I shall hold me responsible. And this country will be a good country. Thank you and love.
And this is the thing that I get to man. Can you please take your seats? Mr. and Mrs. Obama, all of us. Thank you, thank you, and thank you.
Thank you, Rasha, and Doctor Alex, your best governor. But our best president, Mr. Pito Lee, the captain of the Royal Department, he brought a little of politics and notifications. That's the man we remember. Just the man ladies, oh, my love, brother. So he. He brought a little of the Royal Department, he was there, he has a good character. My love, brother, younger brother. Just the man ladies, there is nothing better at this competition than great minds. She's a great tutor. I wish you stay back for your vision and, uh, there will be. Oh, what are they thinking for me? They never say I'm like the rest of the world. There are not many people in the market. It is free, it is free, it is true. That every man, 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 man. We are not going to do it again. We are going to do it again. I just like toys. I'm going to go, go to the man. The last part, the work of the republique, of the center. The people's, the letter, the law, the party. So the man ladies, this is the city of the camera, of the, uh, the man is still there. We give you the, 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 the. It is hard to have it, it is also hard to have it. The man ladies, the man, the man.
I'm pretty much.
Okay, so, um, as you can see, this is, um, Abbas Bus Club. We are the presidential candidate of the Labour Party. Was here live and direct to interact with our business community. He just had a town hall meeting right now. And then he is the conclusion of the town hall meeting. And, uh, the, the entire environment is surrounded by lovers of the Labour Party. And his candidate, Peter Gregory Obi. Of course, if you followed us live on this show, you will know he gave a very beautiful speech as usual consistently, as he has used, um, as he has always been doing to tell Nigerians, especially Abba people, the business community and captains of industries, what he intends to do for Nigeria if he becomes the president of the Federal Republic of Nigeria. So stay cool and watch as we bring to you live updates. What is happening?
Because I'm a helicopter landing somewhere. I've been.